Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, Board of Supervisors. At this time, we will be going into closed session and I will allow the clerk to read out the closed session items.
Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item two pursuant to government code 54957.6 conference with county designated labor negotiator Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organization: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 2015. Item three pursuant to government code 54957.6 conference with county designated labor negotiators Krista Von Latta and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA, Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, Unrepresented Employees.
Thank you. And next time, there, oh, yes, thank you. We're going to be pulling item two off of the closed session agenda and bringing that back at a later date. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and she and none in the room. We will close and adjourn to closed session. Thank you. 2022. At this time, could you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier this morning, we went into a closed session. We, I will allow the clerk to read out item number one and item number three, we will be going back into closed session.
Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Report out from closed session from the May 24th, 2022 meeting. Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Service Employees International Union, Local 1021 versus County of Calaveras, unfair practice charge number SA-CE-1180-M. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item three pursuant to government code 54957.6 conference with county designated labor negotiators Krista Von Latta and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA, Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, Unrepresented Employees. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to staff announcement and I believe we have Ms. Medina.
Yes, good morning. Yes, good morning, everybody. Thank you for moving me to our host. Good morning, Madam Chair, respected Board members, CAO Von Latta, County Council, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. This coming weekend on Saturday, June 11th, Focus in Animal Services will have the last rabies vaccine clinic and microchip clinic for the summer. The clinic is going to be held here at the Government Center from 9 to noon and with attending veterinarians, Dr. Kathy Getman volunteering her time. We would like to thank Focus volunteers and our animal service staff for donating their time as well. The next clinic will be held in September and this clinic will be held in Angels Camp for rabies vaccines only. No microchips will be given at this clinic. Our partners with Calaveras County Public Access TV have started broadcasting our adoptable shelter animals and our Focus in Animal Service clinics. The information is broadcasting on Instagram, alright, Xfinity Comcast Channels 7 and 9 in Calaveras and Amador, and on Volcano on Vision Channels 21 and 22 and CareTale Channels 7 and 9. Thank you, Public Access TV and your staff. We are excited to be doing a future TikTok video with our team. In May, volunteers, our animal service volunteers gave 404 precious hours of their time to help us take care of our animals. We are always looking for volunteers with huge hearts and dedication. Being a volunteer can be filled with so much joy and sometimes a little sadness, but we get through this by knowing that what we are doing day in and day out can save the lives of our Calaveras animals that come to us unwanted, neglected, and sometimes seriously injured. Together, we bring them back and give them as much nurturing, love, and companionship as much as possible and find them their forever homes. Thank you again to all our volunteers. I cannot thank you enough. That comes from the heart. We cannot give enough thanks to them for their dedication and commitment to our shelter animals. In May, 12 pups were adopted, including Augie, Topeles, Bambi, Molly, who was with us for two months, Opie, Cletus, Roscoe, Simpson, Romeo and Juliet, and Toto and Ollie were adopted together and went to the same forever home. Some of our pups that are adoptable now include Mia, Rojo, Maya, Miles, Hank, Sprite, Cole, Luke, Tony, and Senta. We hope to see you at the clinic this Saturday. A huge thanks also to our Calaveras community for helping our shelter animals find their forever homes. Thank you. Hope everybody has a great day.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have the chair.
Good morning, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, Stacy's matrix though.
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, don't have video today. I apologize for that, but good morning to all supervisors and staff. I just wanted to bring a couple of things up to everybody's attention. I know that what's going on in the world today with law enforcement and mental health issues, I received a letter, let me get up here real quick, dated May 16th. We had a couple of deputies go out and help a young man who was in mental crises. We talked about this in the past and I'd just like to bring it to the supervisors' attention and our public's attention, the work that your deputies, correctional staff, and just everybody that works at the sheriff's office, the amount of work that they put in and the fact that they go above and beyond. This, this is from Creative Support Alternatives. They had a young man who was in crises. We had Deputy Braden Bowie and Joseph Robinson that went out to a call on March 29th to assist their people. They just wrote a letter to say that they appreciated the professionalism, wisdom, and the compassion of Deputy Bowie and Joseph Robinson as they calmly spoke to their client. They were able to gain a client's trust and support and they helped, they were able to get him to willingly go to the hospital for an evaluation. So I just, I just want folks to understand that your deputies in Calaveras County go above and beyond to help the citizens of their community. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention just because of what's going on, as I said before, with law enforcement. We have a great group of deputies, our crack officers go above and beyond to help keep our prisoners safe, our volunteers that are out there do a phenomenal job, the search and rescue folks, thank gosh, we haven't had to use them here lately, our office staff, our dispatchers, just everybody that works in the sheriff's office. If you get an opportunity and you see them walking out on the street or you happen to come into the front office, please say thank you because they, they do do an outstanding job, just as all other county employees do. I don't think that we recognize all of our employees often enough for the amount of work that they do for this county. Those all have us, wanted to say thank you and bring it to everybody's attention. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Next, we have Rebecca Turner.
Good morning. I can start with Rick. We actually have a couple deputies helping us with Election Day today. So I'm here just to remind you that today is Election Day. Our turnout so far is trending low. Countywide, we're only at 20%. Statewide, 14. My goal is that we at least stay ahead of the state. So vote centers here at Government Center in San Andreas, the Town Hall in Moke Hill, Bret Hart High School in Angels Camp, and the Vets Hall in Valley Springs are open today until 8:00 PM for in-person voting. You can also drop your ballot off at those locations. In addition, you can return your ballot to any of the Dropbox locations, which include Big Trees Market in Arnold, Payless Market in Copperopolis, Pizza Plus in West Point, Save Mart in Angels Camp, or you can still mail your ballot back. However, it has to be postmarked today. So be sure to vote, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any other staff announcements? Corey?
Good morning, Chair Feldorf, members of the board. Corey Allen, your Health and Human Services Agency Director. I'm here to let you know that despite the changes in our COVID-19 pandemic and the impact of that coronavirus, we have had two recent deaths here in Calaveras County. Last week, we did see the loss of a gentleman in his 80s and today on our website, we will be sharing a loss of a gentleman in his 50s. So it's just another reminder that despite the distance that we've had from the beginning of this pandemic, we will still continue to see impacts and we want to send our deepest condolences to the families and loved ones of those who have been lost to this particular disease. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
There is no online public comment or staff comments.
And she and none from any other staff in the room. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is recognition and acknowledgements. And if the clerk could read out number four.
Item four proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation honoring Calaveras High School's 2022 girls softball team and coaches for an undefeated season.
And I will at this time turn it over to Vice Toffnelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I brought both of these proclamations to the board to honor the, the girls softball team that has been undefeated. I know they lost their division title game was a heartbreaker, but the current season, last season and this season undefeated, which is quite an accomplishment. And the boys team won the section Sam Joaquin, Sac Joaquin, Division Four title and they had a great season also, actually two seasons. Last season, they were 13 and 2 and there were no playoffs last year for either softball or baseball. So we didn't get to go to championship game or even be in a playoff for it last year for either one of them because of COVID, but two outstanding years. So I brought these proclamations here before the board to honor you guys for all your accomplishments and you should be very proud of it and your parents should be very proud of you too. I know one grandparent is. So we will start with the girls high school. Proclamation honoring Calaveras High School 2022 girls softball team and coaches for an undefeated season. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2022 Calaveras High School softball team has enabled these student athletes to earn the Motherlode League championship title. And whereas the Calaveras High School softball team remained undefeated in the Motherlode League with a record 15-0 and with a winning streak of overall of 53 games. Whereas the win is the fourth time the Calaveras High School softball team was headed to the CIF Sac Joaquin Section Division Five playoffs as the number one seed. Whereas alongside team members, parents, faculty, and the student body of the Calaveras High School were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. And whereas, and as I go forward, if I mispronounce anybody's name, I certainly apologize and you can correct me if you want to. So we'll move forward. Whereas led by head coach Mike Koep, Kep, assistant coaches Eric Betchler, Beckler, and Mindy Pettijohn, and statistician Miranda Cardon, the Calaveras High School softball team achieved an incredible level of success during their 2022 season. And whereas, and I'm going to name off all the players here, so if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Where tremendous support integrity and character were demonstrated by Kaylee Howard, Bailey Clark, Madison Clark, Brooke Nordahl, Madison Bernascani, Lenny Cook, Reese Moser, Macy Villegas, Mariah Maddock, Cameron Harvey, Emily Johnson, Isla Bellflower, Paige Johnson, Jamie Bellflower, Izzy Tapia, and Brian Gardina. And so I will stop right there and I'll ask Amy Hassawander, the, the principal, if she would like to say a few words up at the microphone.
So we just have tremendous amount of stuff going on. Okay, if I have to. We have a tremendous amount going on at school this week, graduation on Thursday. So I just want to say about our girls team, you know, their skill is second to none, but, but their character, their drive, their passion, their grit is what's, is what really got them there and it was, and it is what will take them through life and I am just so proud of the work that they've accomplished. So, thank you.
Welcome. Does anybody else like to say anything before we move on? Parents? Coach? No?
Players?
Player?
Player?
No? All right, well, I'll bring it back to the board then and I'm looking for a motion.
It's a tremendous achievement. We really appreciate all the hard work you put into this. This is, you know, really foundational moment going into the rest of your lives, you know, and it's something you should be proud of. With that, Mr. Toffnelli, I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Stopper.
I would like to echo the comments of Supervisor Toffnelli and Supervisor Stopper and congratulate the women on their great season and again, I've known some of these women since they were little girls. So it's, it's neat watching them grow up and succeed and be so awesome for our high school. And with that, I'll make a second.
Second by Supervisor Garamendi. No other comments? I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. So now for, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Calaveras High School and the 2022 girls softball team and coaches on its outstanding, outstanding accomplishments and undefeated season. This is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, the seventh day of June 2022. And if I, if I want to get.
The coaches and the girls players, please come up.
Then bring everybody else come up.
Just come up together.
The rest were that invested in their academics. That's phenomenal.
This is for you. This is for the school. And then this is for the rest of the players.
We will get them out to them.
We can give everybody a couple of that.
Okay, ready? One, two. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which is our second proclamation that I know Vice wants to get to excitingly. So clerk, can you please read, read that out?
Yes. Item five proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation honoring Calaveras High School's 2022 CIF Sac Joaquin Section Division Four baseball championship.
And again, I will move it over to Vice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, as I said earlier, congratulations, this is, this team recorded history for the program at Calaveras High School with their division championship against Maryville last month. It's been, it's been in May already. It's already been a couple of weeks down the line. So congratulations to you guys and congratulations to your coaches and all the parents that came out every week to watch you guys play. So we will move on with the proclamation and again, if I pronounce your name wrong, you can correct me or your coach can correct me, but I want to make sure we have them all pronounced correctly. So this is proclamation honoring Calaveras High School's 2022 CIF Sac Joaquin Section Division Four baseball championship. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2022 Calaveras High School baseball team has enabled these student athletes to earn a championship title. And whereas the win is the first section championship victory in the history of Calaveras High School baseball. Whereas alongside team members, parents, faculty, and the student body of Calaveras High School were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. And I'm surprised, I guess Courtney's at work, otherwise she would be here in the back and she would have a few words to say, I'm sure. Whereas led by head coach Tom Dlap, assistant coaches Dan Sweet, Donald Durham, and Trace Durham, and Jake Moat, the Calaveras High School baseball team achieved an incredible level of success during their 2022 season and also last year, 2021. They were 13 and 2 last year. Whereas tremendous sportsmanship, integrity, and character were demonstrated by Tyler Maddock, Chris Maddock, Grayden Brim, Jason Nelson, Chase Brook, Andy Reus, Gus, I don't want to pronounce, I don't want to pronounce this wrong, so you tell me if it's right. Says Toffnelli, is it? Jay Ash, Mason Moser, Dean Habsted, Aiden Look, Jacob Campbell, and Woody Gardina. And whereas winning the 2022 CIF Sac Joaquin Section Division Four baseball championship brought honor to Calaveras High School and the community members of Calaveras County. And I'll stop right there and ask if one of the coaches or Amy would like to come up and say a few words. I know head coach is, is on vacation.
Dan Sweet. These guys, just like today, they showed up all year, whether it was early morning to pull the top off or mandatory practice on Memorial Monday or the pizza parties after practice, they're always there. That's what it takes, that kind of dedication and friendship that they all share and that's what it takes to go this way, this far. I mean, you could have all the talent in the world, but if you don't work together, you don't get anywhere. So they did a great job and we're darn proud of them all.
They did and I got to tell you, the coaching staff did a wonderful job, a great job. There was a lot of things that happened during the year and especially the last game at Bret Hart, but you held everybody together, the coaching staff did a great job and kept them all focused and kept them all focused all year on one goal and you guys achieved it. So with that, is there anybody else would like to come up and say anything? Nobody? Okay, well, I'll bring it back to the board and I'll say, is there any comments from the board?
The fact that we had to stop a board meeting so you could go to a baseball game?
That's correct.
That's right. It was an excuse to have to.
So is there any other comments other than that? Thank you, Marita, for bringing that out. I'll move in for a motion then.
You want to go first?
This, this is a tremendous achievement. You know, you took, you took it to the goal and then took a few steps farther. It's something that'll live on with you for the rest of your life and you can take this experience and team building as your coach just brought up, Mr. Sweet, you know. I have to, I have to say that, you know, the coach, the coaches taught the right thing by bringing the team together and, you know, you all grew up together and, and, you know, this, this is summation of y'all, y'all coming together and doing all the right things to make the team work and succeed. So something to be very proud of. With that, Mr. Toffnelli, I'd like to make a motion.
Have a motion by Supervisor Stopper.
I want to make a second, but I, you know, I complimented the young women on, I'm glad they're so great and I've known some of you knuckleheads since you were little guys too and you have turned into remarkably fine young men and I'm proud to know many of you and our coaches, great job. And with that, I'll add a second.
I have a second by Supervisor Garamendi. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Calaveras High School and the 2022 CIF Sac Joaquin Section Division Four championship baseball team on its outstanding accomplishment. This is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County, State of California, the seventh day of June 2022. I want to give the entire team up here and the coaching staff and Mikey too, she was a statistician and scorekeeper and. And Mikey too, she was a statistician and scorekeeper and- All right. Oh, is there any way I can squeeze in there?
Of course.
Like next to this guy?
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Great job. You can have the rest of your day off as soon as you can.
Chief Johnson.
They're checking her. They're checking her probation on the way out. Thursday. Thursday. Congratulations, Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or whether agendas may be addressed during the public comment. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter that is not posted on the agenda unless it deemed to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. At this time, is there any public comment? And I will start on with the June.
Yes, we do. Andrea Kinko? Andrea?
Hi, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. So again, this is Andrea called with a pincon from SGIU 1021. We have some concerns over the proposed budget and personnel changes for fiscal year 2223 that we are eager to address with human resources and the department heads. Unfortunately, scheduling has been difficult. And additionally, I would be remiss if I did not mention the much talk about class and comp studies. There has been promises made by human resources that did not get upheld. And this creates distrust amongst the membership, which is regrettable, but was absolutely avoidable. So with that, I hope you guys have a great meeting and a great day. Thank you.
Is there any other online?
There is no further online public comment.
Okay, and Madam Chair had to step away. She had an emergency phone call for a minute, so I will take over. Is there any public comment out in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be accepted upon, they will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda. Is there any board member wish to remove an item? Is there a staff member wish to remove an item from consent? Is there any member of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Open for a motion for consent.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Garamendi. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 401. Move on to... I tell you, before we move on to the regular agenda, why don't we take a five-minute break? And maybe that'll be enough time for Amanda to come back, to participate in the regular agenda. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay. Sorry for that interruption. We will go on to regular agenda, item number 12. If the clerk could please call that out.
Item 12, action item, human resources. Introduce, waive first reading, and authorize summary publication of an ordinance adopting a salary increase for the coroner public administrator.
Judy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. On the May 24th board meeting, the board has had given direction to human resources to go back out and look for alternatives to compare the coroner's salary to. So my staff and I did that. We went out and looked at what other counties are doing in their coroner offices. And so many of the ones were very large offices. They weren't good comparisons. In looking at the closer deputy coroners, the deputy coroner job description for Sanuslo County actually has the same duties. They assist in autopsies, they embalm, they do all of those things. But one of the things that they don't have and they're not responsible for are the executive level responsibilities that is taken care of by the sheriff, coroner. And so in looking at that, also, we did talk with the Enyo County Coroner's Office to see why the salary is what it is. Of course, they have a population of 17,000. They also, the coroner for Enyo County also assists Mono County. But when Mono County is charged back, that money goes straight to the coroner's budget, not to the coroner's salary. The coroner also owns the two mortuaries that are in the county. And so that's probably why his base rate is what it is. So all of that being said, we did sit down, discuss this with the CAO. And we are recommending the salary be increased to 39.72 an hour, which is 82,617 annually. Can I ask any questions, or answer any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you. Judy, why did we not include in the written summary for the item Enyo County's and the logic behind that? We only included Sacwakine and Sanuslo.
Because we weren't considering Enyo County in the salary because of it being only 25,000 annually. And it wasn't a good comparison.
So they've got half the population roughly of Calaveras, a little bit less than half. But the counties we compared with have roughly 10 times or more of the population. So I'm not so sure we're comparing apples and apples here.
Right. Well, it's almost, in this situation, it is very difficult. And, you know, from the beginning, we brought forward that we had no apples to compare this to.
We only had one apple, and that'd be Enyo. Enyo having half the population, if we doubled it salary for population, pretty easy math, we'd be pretty close to where we are. I just feel like this research is incomplete. That's just my view.
Supervisor Stopper?
This item was brought before us a few weeks ago. It was brought up that, um, that we had done some research, a survey on these three positions ahead of everything else. And I just, I have to reiterate what Mr. Garamendi just said, that, you know, we're getting this information at the last minute. I don't see it as, you know, not having Enyo in here is one of the considerations. Whether apples and apples, apples and oranges. Look, we don't have it, but we, you know, we need top end, bottom end. And things are similar from every end. And this information wasn't brought forward the first time. It seems incomplete to me the second time. And that's just my position as of this time.
Supervisor Carroway?
I think we're trying to find something round to put in the round hole. And staff has continually said this is a difficult position to compare to. And we didn't. And because of what the coroner said, we asked to have it brought back. So, I mean, my feeling is they made a recommendation based on what was available or not available. Since it was so difficult, they've now come back with something else. We discussed Enyo. And really due to the pressure that we received from the coroner at board meeting, we asked staff to come back. I just feel like we were sort of searching for something that just might not be there. And even if we say, okay, let's put it back and add Enyo, I mean, we're doing this because of the pressure that we received. And I just think we either accept this or we bring it back again. I don't know. Ms. Hawkins, would it make much of a difference if we double what Enyo gets and add this? Is that going to make much of a difference?
It will make some difference in the averaging. But, I mean, it comes down to, this is, you know, there's not a clear comparable. We're trying, you know, we looked closely at duties. We looked closely, you know, and, but we can, we can look at Enyo again. One of the things that we were not able to get in the timeframe that we had was what Mono County has charged back to add that amount into the... I also think that Enyo is not a good, clear comparable because first of all, the coroner owns the two mortuaries in the county. And so he is working at a rate that most people would not work at. And so it is, I don't see where Enyo is a good comparable in any way, shape, or form.
Now, in Enyo County, that, he owns the two mortuaries, right? Did our coroner not say that he gets paid a salary from a mortuary here in the county? Is that not comparable with an extra salary?
I think owning two mortuaries is different than working for a mortuary.
It, yes, it is much different. But at the same time, you're taking salaries from either way, you know? It's, you know, owning a mortuary and getting paid by the mortuary that... Either way, you're taking a salary. So there is very much a comparison there, from my perspective.
I agree. I mean, I specifically asked for this to be included, and it wasn't in the report.
I agree with Jack and Ben on some of what they're saying. I would ask, is it possible? Is it possible to maybe bring this back next week and have the comparison in the summary with Enyo included? And give us some time to look at it. Maybe you can get that done. And then send us an email on it so we have some time to look at it and do some investigations on our own. Is that, you think that would be viable? Something you would look at? No? So you want to move on with what we have in front of us?
Is it possible to say something, the scorer?
Who is it? Kevin. Oh, hi, Kevin. Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, you know, I didn't have this agenda submitted in my hand during the meeting last week. And I, you know, I wouldn't dare to pressure you. I get 15 cents is ridiculous. Okay, and I look at the way the raises were done here. And in my mind, it's all discretionary. I mean, the sheriff got a 25% increase. The district attorney got a 16% increase. Based on discretion, as far as I can see. And then you look at the back page of the agenda submitted, and you look at the way that the Board of Supervisors got their raise. And, you know, it's based on an average of audit controller, treasurer, task collector, assessor, and clerk recorder, and the sheriff's compensation. Well, when you add the sheriff's compensation to the Board of Supervisors, you know, that jumps it up. He's making $98 an hour compared to everybody else. So that jumps you guys up to 3582 to 3785, and 4327, and 40 to 4530 for the board chair. That being said, you know, there are no comparisons. But as it is, I couldn't tell you the last time I had a salary adjustment. I mean, I've gotten earned longevity raises. But, you know, there was nothing said about, there's no, in other words, there's a surveys for the Board of Supervisors. You know, I don't really see why this can't be done the same way for the coroner. You know, we beat a dead horse, you know? You know, it's, like I say, it's totally discretionary. So I guess it's how you feel. You know, I don't really see whether salary surveys are really relevant when you take a, when you get someone that's 36% below average, 25%. You get someone that's 25% below average, 16%. Discretion can be used. So I don't see why you just can't jump this bridge and get it over with today. I mean, $7 and whatever it is is acceptable to me. You know, and move on. So that being said, I don't, I mean, I had more. I wasn't prepared. I thought this was on the consent agenda. So, you know, you look at this and it's, there's a lot of discretion can be used here. Anyway, that's it for me at this point. I'm still here, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I was just going to also bring up to the board that earlier this year, I think one of the difficulties in the state of California is most of the coroner sheriffs. We're one of the few. But the new legislation coming out, we are going to probably be ahead of because we do have the separation between the coroner and the sheriff. So other counties may be looking back at us and Enyo. So we're kind of in this weird void of new legislation coming ahead and having this discussion ourselves about this. But just another inch of information to be reminded about on why it's so difficult for the data. Are there any other? Supervisor Carroway?
The supervisor's salary set by ordinance is not considered indiscriminate, as the coroner has pointed out. The sheriff's position and the DA's position were much easier to do comparisons to. It was not sort of throwing a poke at a dartboard as I feel like the coroner has asked us to do. It has been a difficult- It has been a difficult position to compare to. If the board wants Inyo included in this, then I think the recommendation should be to move this out a week. And if, I don't know if it'll make a difference or not. We did make the change based on what the coroner said at board meeting. So we want to do it again, that's fine. He's happy with what this is. If my colleagues are not, then someone needs to make a motion to move this out a week.
I need to ask for public comment. If there isn't any other board comments. Kevin, is there any public comment? Do you see I'll start with online? And if you are on public comment online, please be mindful of the time limit.
There is no online public comment?
Okay.
I've got the more comment if I can, if I'm still on.
Kevin, yeah, Kevin, you can talk.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, the apples and oranges, if there's no one to compare to, I've found all kinds of things to compare to on the, on the internet. But, uh, you know, the coroner's salary has always been above the board supervisor's salary. So that being said, um, it's just like your, you know, comparison for the board supervisors. There's no survey for the board supervisors, so, you know, there should be something equitable. And, you know, there, we haven't seen anything in, I, I can't tell you the last raise. I know, I talked to Barbara outside the meeting on the board, and she hasn't had a raise since she's been there. So, anyway, that being said, I guess we move on, you do what you want here, so thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any in-person public comment? See, now I'll bring back to the board. There any other comments? We have two, supervisor, two public.
Madam Chair, I, I would make a motion that we move this item to next week, and we have the staff include in this comparison Inyo County, and give us a chance to go over this and look at that comparison compared to what's before us right now, and be prepared next week to make a decision one way or another. So that's my motion.
Is your motion on the table, or is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Second, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any names?
None.
So three, two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have agenda item number 13. Clerk, could you please read out?
Item 13, action item, administrative office, conduct the fiscal year 2022-23 recommended budget hearings, receive presentations on the recommended budget from the CAO and various department heads, and provide the CAO with direction for any requested changes to the recommended budget.
Kristina Motta.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christopher Motta from the administrative office. As you know, this is the beginning of our budget hearings. We do not anticipate any, um, any presentations by departments. However, appropriate county fiscal staff and department heads are available to answer questions. I will start by going through a PowerPoint presentation and then recommend that we take questions in order of the budgets in the budget book. And with that, I will go ahead and share my screen. I'm getting a message, Stacy, that I can't.
Are you doing the PowerPoint? Okay. Okay.
There's a screen share problem.
Two while you do it.
Okay. We'll take a.
I like the way you did that idea.
Take a break while you get that out.
Cool.
Okay. Up and running, and this time I will turn it over to the CAO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to note how awesome it is to see so many people in this room after two years of COVID, so I just want to thank you all for coming down. I think it's great. So we will go ahead and get started with our presentation. Overview of what we're going to talk about. We will talk about the budget message, budget landscape influences, a revenue snapshot for the general fund, budget requests, summary, personal request, general fund structural deficit, and then recommendations. So our overall message for this current recommended budget is to maintain the 5.3% reduction that we have included for the past couple of budget years. We've included that for most departments that can absorb it in this current budget. It is, as you'll recall, budgeted as salary savings. However, that cut is not intended to be absorbed as in salaries and benefits. That absorption would be at the discretion of the affected department head. Reserves are above the board created policy level of 8%. Contingencies are basically at the policy level of 2%, with generally conservative revenue assumptions and the general recommendation to stay the course and be as status quo as we can under the circumstances. So, um, in terms of the overall landscape, we remain to be borrowing from special revenue funds. Room loans are currently booked at approximately $3 million, as a reminder. Those loans are booked as a liability to the general fund, and when the auditor controller and I do our general fund projection, we take that into consideration. Also, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds are included in this budget and have been budgeted for two CIP projects for the DA building, or three, rather, some electrical and infrastructure work we need to do on the campus, as well as the animal shelter and the district attorney building. So, um, we have budgeted, and this is the 5.3%, at approximately 1.9 million. Fund balance is projected to be at 6.8 million. We expect that to go up between now and final budget where it will increase. Last year, we saw a budgeted increase, or a, a fund balance increase on the general fund of over $1 million. If we're fortunate, we'll see the same this year. Our TDR transfer to balance is at 1.6 million, contingencies at approximately 1.4 million, and general fund reserve is at 5 million. So, pardon me. So again, fund balance projection at 6.8. This is about $200,000 lower than what we were projecting this time last year. As I was just mentioning, last year, our funding fund balance went to 8.2, substantially higher than the, than prior year. So these are solid fund balance numbers that we're seeing here. Our general revenues are coming in well, we'll talk more about that. We had been conservative for the last couple of budget years, and, you know, COVID obviously was not something that we could really predict was going to happen. So we increased our revenues in this current fiscal year, but they are coming in substantially higher than what we projected for things like sales tax and TOT. So salary savings, we have calculated to be 6.6 million, and that's taking into consideration the salary savings that we have budgeted, plus the, the salaries and benefits that are currently in our budget and are not expected to be used between now and June 30th. And in this current fiscal year, we are not anticipating to make a TDR transfer to balance. So in terms of forecasting, generally, I mean, there are multiple ways to forecast, but if you, if we budget conservatively, then what happens is we see the larger fund balances at the end of the year. And the idea there is that we don't have to go back to the board for additional appropriations. It is harder to balance. That's where we get our TDR transfer to balance. We use up our fund balance, you know, these are not ideal scenarios. You know, if we were to take the opposite tack of, you know, really looking more closely at what we anticipate our revenues and expenses to be, we were to change some of our budgeting assumptions as it relates to salaries and benefits, then we would see likely far less, for example, salary savings at the end of the year. I don't recommend that because then we're essentially budgeting 100%. Well, first of all, we would need to make additional changes far more than we've had to historically make during mid-year budget, for example. And, you know, I, then we're basically eating up our projected fund balance in a different way. I mean, it is a little, we could do it either way. Generally speaking, though, we are taking the conservative approach in this budget. So as we know, COVID-19, I think it's a likely economic downturn, but that's just my position. We're working on the compensation study, American Rescue Plan Act funds. I've mentioned ongoing business impacts as a result of COVID and other, other unknown things that may occur, unemployment, CalPERS unfunded liability, Federal Secure World Schools Act, Measure G revenue. As we know, we have reduced for the first two quarters of this coming fiscal year, Measure G revenue by 60%, and then other unknown factors. So the revenue snapshot, as of early May, when we pulled the financial system data for our budget book, sales and use taxes were approximately $4.1 million, almost 4.2. That was a major increase over the adopted budget numbers, and that number, I expect, will be closer to $5 million when we close out the books. Prop 172, which tracks sales tax, is coming in at 3 million, so about a third more than we had budgeted there. And TOT tax, which is, again, this is, these numbers are as of early May, when we pulled the information from our financial system, at 2.0, oh, sorry, I misspoke. These numbers are more recent than that. These are current numbers. TOT is sitting at about 2.7 million, so a massive increase of 50%, 56% over what we had budgeted in this current year. So, sales and use taxes, we're projecting will be up to, by about 900,000, recommending maybe 4.5 million. I want to be really careful here that I anticipate I will be recommending all of these revenue streams to be increased in the final budget. TOT has been budgeted at status quo. Here, that would mean 871,000 in terms of general fund contribution, and approximately 435,000 to each of the visitors bureau and fire. I want to be careful here to explain that historically, for the last several years, we have used a 25% allocation to fire districts, roads, the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, and Sheriff's Department. So if we were, in this past year, what your board directed was that we would look back at final budget when we finally knew exactly what our closing fund balance was for N-TOT and Prop 172, and get back, and then make the adjustment for what 25% of what was in this current fiscal year. So a fixed number based on what happens in this current fiscal year then became, I'm sorry, the prior fiscal year, but became the budget for this year. If the board chooses to go that direction now, then those allocations will be substantially higher. It would be something to the effect of 1.5 million in the aggregate going to CVB and the fire districts, and approximately the same amount going to, in the aggregate, the sheriff's department and the roads department. You know, there are other, other ways your board could choose to, to allocate these funds. I will take your direction and ask for any feedback that you have, if you'd like to have that conversation now or after the presentation perhaps. In terms of Measure G, we dropped it to 1.8 million. Again, I, that's, there's a lot of motion right now in the industry with our tax structure that has been reduced for the first two quarters of the year. It is possible that I will be recommending to increase that figure. I think it's likely that I will be increasing that figure at recommended, I mean, at final budget, but that is certainly something that we need to be keeping in mind. So, a revenue trend. Let's see. So taxes coming in just about the same as last year. Permits and fees less, this is primarily as a result of the building permit fees that we are not seeing the anticipated revenue that we had hoped we would see in this current fiscal year, and so we're reducing that. In terms of state revenue, this is an increase primarily as a result of the jail-based competency treatment contract through the sheriff's department, and that is where we're seeing primarily that huge jump. And then operating transfers, and this is down substantially primarily because of the reduced TDR transfer to balance and reductions in the PG&E settlement funds that, if you'll recall, would flow out of the special revenue fund and into a generating, a general fund operating budget. So overall, our anticipated revenues are down over this current year. Great. So in terms of appropriations by major fund, general fund is at 72 million, so that's down for reasons I just described. And you'll see it here also in public works, again, for reasons I've just described. Otherwise, capital improvements, that's due to the ARPA funds. That increase is for the animal shelter, the DA building, and again, about a half a million dollars worth of infrastructure work that we need to do at the government center in order to be prepared to erect DA building. So as, as always, we have increases in salaries and benefits, and that is our primary expense in the county, consistent with other counties typically. Services and supplies are down substantially, and again, this is where we see reduced expenses in certain of the OES budgets, as well as the PG&E operating budget. And otherwise, we're essentially flat here. Capital assets did go up, although only. Capital assets did go up, although only approximately 1.4 million of that is hitting the general fund with special revenue funds being, carrying the rest of that cost. So if we'd like, we can look at the spreadsheet now for personal. We've done some physician cleanup. One thing I want to mention is that the Department of Emergency Services actually obtained since the development of this budget book, a grant by the amount of approximately $150,000 that is specifically for staff, a grant analyst, to work with about fire mitigation and seeking grant funding for those types of projects, as well as someone who could facilitate the work that we'll be doing under the good and evil agreement that we have, just your board has approved with the Forest Service. That is not in the budget book. My recommendation here is that we add that to the physician control list item that Human Resources will bring to board at the last meeting of the month. And then we will adjust the revenues and the expenditures and the final adopted budget for September. We've also got capital improvement projects and capital assets, again, approximately 1.3 million by the general fund. So Prop 68 funding and the amount of 400,000 has been budgeted for railroad flat, Alex Quinones and Vani Park. You'll recall, our community organizations budgeted last year, we included $10,000 per supervisory district. We have rebudgeted the funds that were not expended in this current year. And consistent with last year, I am recommending that we include those funds that can be used in essentially the same way. So just, we may need to make public benefit findings, but that's simple enough to do for our nonprofit partners in the county.
Just a question. You're recommending, did we do the 50,000 thing again?
Yeah, as well as rebudgeting.
Is there any funds left from last year that weren't spent by districts?
I do believe one supervisory district still has funds outstanding and, and also.
Yeah, yeah.
She just said she's incoming into this next year.
I have plenty of good things to use on, Ms. Callaway. I was thinking of using other monies on the roads down there.
I'm still waiting for staff to do my public funding benefit.
I just asked a question. So are we carrying, asking to carry that over and add another 10 to what's ever left in those other?
Yeah.
Okay. Instead of dispersing, if he has 10 grand, there's five districts, two grand each.
And I apologize Supervisor Flandre, if I wasn't aware.
That gets so long.
Krista, do we each get another 10 for this coming budget year?
Yes.
Thank you. Plus Ben's too.
Okay. Unless anyone has questions on the debt service slide, I think I'll move along. All right. So looking at the REM fees, this is where we've got a balance of approximately 11.6 million. That is before the REM loans, after the REM loans, balance of approximately 8.7 million. And that was based on the fund balance that was in place when we developed the budget book. So we will update this slide after the close of the books when we bring this back for final. TETER. So much less of a transfer to balance this year. Projected fund balance as of June 30th is at about 6.2 million. We have budgeted, again, the annual contribution to the general fund. We've got our $1.6 million budgeted transfer to close the books. And then we've got our TETER fund projects at about 1.65 million, plus our estimated revenue. If all of this were to occur, we would be sitting at a fund balance of 3.4 million. Okay. So as we've discussed, approximately 6.8 million projected in fund balance. We think that's conservative. It was about 7 million at this time last year. When we closed the books, it went to 8.2 million. General fund contingencies are down from 2.3 million to approximately 1.4 million. Again, we are not intending to make a TETER transfer to close our books this year, although we are using a $1.6 million TETER transfer to close the gap between our anticipated revenues and expenditures. So there was also, just as a reminder, a 5.3% reduction to balance of approximately 1.9 million. So this is our structural deficit slide. We can see our total deficit for '22, '23, because our revenues came in strong and we were conservative in terms of budgeting them. It's actually gone down from what it was in the prior year, so about $6.5 million that we are using fund balance and other transfers in order to close the books. Again, that's, that's down from the 9 million primary driver, and that is our excise tax revenue that we have received, which is still strong for the year and coming in over budget, as well as strong sales tax numbers that were conservatively budgeted, our two prime examples, the prior year. And this is where we had very, very strong. Sorry. Was actually less. And then you can see this is where the year we did not have cannabis. So we do have a structural deficit. There are other ways to calculate this deficit that are preferable in some respects, but I prefer, at least for now, to show you at the high level exactly what we're looking at. Because what this means is that if we were more objective and making our revenue assumptions and our expense assumptions and perhaps being more granular, we could actually reduce this. But then there would be additional concerns regarding whether we actually had enough money in the budget to cover us for the entire fiscal year. There would be more adjustments as a result of that. So options for future consideration, we can certainly try and expand our contract services. We could present a sales tax increase to voters. And as always, we should be continuing to work on our fee studies to make sure that we're capturing the accurate amount that it costs the county in order to process our various fee-related activities. Other options for consideration regarding expenditures, you know, we have, as a small rural county, very few non-mandatory services. The ones that we have are economic development, the library, PATV, and the museum. Of course, we could revisit the TOT methodology, and we could revisit certain of our county contributions. So with that, I would like to thank your board, our auditor controller, Gomes. Her office has been incredibly helpful to us throughout this process, as well as information technology staff, particularly their business analysts, the staff in the administrative office, which has worked tirelessly to get this budget to you, as has HR and our department heads and fiscal staff across the county. And with that, I recommend that we conduct the hearing. As I've mentioned, no departments are intending to present. I would like to seek any direction from your board as we go through the budget book to answer your questions, and then we'll bring back those changes in September. On June 21st, that is when we will actually ask for you to adopt the recommended budget as well as the capital assets resolution, special districts, and designated fund resolutions. And if you would like, we could do a study session in August after the year-end close. I don't honestly think that will be necessary. And then bring back the adjustments at the adopted budget in September.
Thank you, Krista. At this time, I'm going to ask if the board members would like to start at the top and go down, or if, first, are there any questions on the PowerPoint in general before we tackle each tab? Ben?
Just one thing before it gets forgotten in the shuffle. If you, if everyone does decide to go down, I just want to talk about the $150,000 OES grant for contract, or for bringing in a grant writer for fire issues. Can we discuss that real quick?
Let me open the public hearing first. Okay, so before I do that, is there any questions on this PowerPoint before I do? Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Supervisor Stoppa, you're up.
Thank you. Yeah, just real quick, I know, I know these grants have a checklist. They have to go down and you have to follow certain parameters. It kind of goes hand in hand with something else I'm going to bring up, because we, in the past, have approved the hiring of a grant writer for the county. To the best of my knowledge, we haven't filled that position as of this time?
Actually, that position, the incumbent matriculated yesterday.
Can you speak up?
Yes, that, that position was filled effective yesterday.
So it is filled as of yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, with that grant, now, back to the grant, and, you know, with the restrictions in place for hiring a person, is that also applicable to contract services? You know, outsourcing someone else to write those grants for us that can dedicate the time to the money?
You were wondering if the funds can be used to contract out as opposed to getting a limited-term grant analyst? I would need to confer with John Osborne, our OES director, if he's on. John?
He's joining as a panelist now.
Hi, Don.
Good morning. Sorry about the delay there. I was promoted to panelist. Good morning, Madam Chair, CEO of Amara, and supervisors. The, the grant award that we're speaking with is, comes from the California Fire Safety Council, and it is not a grant-writing position. It is actually a wildfire mitigation coordinator position that will assist us in coordinating the multiple projects across the county that are centered around fire, wildfire mitigation. So we have a lot of groups such as CHIPS, CalAM, CalFire, the Forest Service, our local Fire Safety Council, and our efforts that are all kind of doing project mitigation work. I won't say haphazardly, but independent of each other. And the goal of this grant is to coordinate those projects so that we're all working towards a common goal. There is obviously some administrative capacity with this, with this position, which would include grant writing, so that we could apply for mitigation funding to conduct projects. But it's not solely a grant-writing position.
That answers my question, John, very, very well. Thank you, my, thank you. Yeah, so you can't really contract that out in that capacity.
Well, that being said, so we could choose to do that, but I think that would be an arduous process, and it's an 18-month grant program. So we can eat up, you know, one-third of the grant with RFPs and selecting a contractor versus having someone here live in our office.
Yeah, I agree with you. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Very welcome, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, John. Okay, so with that, we'll bring it back to the board. So I'm going to kind of ask what everyone's consensus is. Do you want to go tab by tab, or do we want to hit specific department and work our way through? What is the preference?
Like the Sheriff's Office?
Madam Chair, I was thinking about this morning. I prefer to go tab by tab, and if, we could see if anybody's got, doesn't have an issue, would say administration, we could just go on to the next one.
Right.
And if there's any change in polling, make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, so then we will do what we did last year, and we'll start going tab by tab. So.
Well.
What?
So we start with the message?
So the presentation did the first couple tabs, the overview, and revenue trends. At this time, we'll start with administration. Unless someone has a question about the revenue tab. Callaway?
I have a question. Krista, the tech property taxes that were on the slide, the TD. There's a $28,000 difference between '22, '23, '21, '22. Considering the housing market, I don't know if the assessor has a feel for it, the treasurer wouldn't, that seems a little low considering the
Yeah.
price of housing. I mean, I know it's stabilizing now.
No, I actually agree with you there. In fact, I think our current year will exceed what is in this particular budget, but the projections that we got from the assessor's office are what is in here. So I do think that those will go up. And I think when we see that last 5% that hits at the end of June, that we will be in excess of what we have budgeted for this current year. So that's the place where if I get revised numbers from the assessor's office, we'll make those adjustments on the adopted budget.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back one. I do have a question on the fixed asset request. I know majority of some of these are rollovers from last year, given that we had issues with the trip and ordering vehicles. But as a overall county fleet management, we had a presentation a couple months ago, how are we implementing the non-rollovers into the overall county goal of our fleet?
Sorry.
With the new, new request? And again, it's not the rollover. I know those rollovers we've been reading already a year or four.
Okay, so.
So most of the departments all have put, some of the departments have put in requests to new fleet.
Yes.
We have not made a county decision on what our fleet management is going to look like.
Correct.
So how are we incorporating the non-rollovers, the new request, into this when we haven't even decided as a board, as a whole, what fleet management's going to look like?
It's totally up to your board to give direction that we can certainly remove whatever new request you prefer to remove.
So you don't have a recommendation here?
I, this is my recommendation.
These are all of what she recommends we do. Okay. Including. Including, including a $10,000 envelope opener? I got to see it.
Which ones I carry?
I want to keep my fingers away from it.
That's, um... Number 5701, is that like the fifth, sixth one down for the, um...
One of three.
Excuse me, for the Elections Department. Formations 410 envelope opener, 9628. I just got to see this thing. It's like, it's like a robot that you put in the litter and it opens. It's already there? No, it's already there. We just haven't paid for it. Could go back.
That's curious.
I think that this would be for another one, right?
We need to?
We are vote by mail, so...
Okay, so I'm guessing, based off of the, not really a response, is we're not considering a fleet management?
No, we're...
Into the requests on here.
So we have direction to bring back a fleet management item in December. If your board would like to put a hold on purchasing capital vehicles in this budget year, pending when we have a fleet policy, I'm happy to do that.
I'm not.
Well, I don't think the sheriff will let us write that one too easily in certain situations. So, but, so what you're saying is, so you're saying we're going to bring back that in December halfway through the year, and none of that's loaded into here on the, on your recommendation?
Because the work hasn't been done yet, so yeah. That's why it's coming back at the end of the year.
I do have a question on this. I'm glad you went back to this. We're going to be mandated here, starting in 2029, with electric vehicles. And none of these vehicles that I see on here that we're purging, which is a short time away, are either a hybrid or electric. I'd like to know some more information about what you're recommending here and what these vehicles are. I mean, we have to start at some time here, looking to at least start transposing over to what we're mandated to do. And it would be very difficult for the sheriff on his at some point, and we may be able to get around some of that. But the other vehicles, I, I, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to be looking at electric vehicles, or at least some type of hybrid that we can use.
Is that mandate for 2029 to be buying only electric vehicles, or you have to convert the ones that are currently fuel over? I think there's a difference.
I don't have it in front of me. I believe it's that new vehicle purchases, and I want to say it's 100% by 2035, if I'm not mistaken. I think there's different targets at different years.
But in 2029, we're supposed to be moving towards and having electric vehicles.
Right.
And that's the only purchases we're supposed to be making. But if we're making these purchases now, what's the life of some of these?
Right.
And then we're going to be stuck with them.
But in answer to your question, Supervisor Stoppa, it's a new purchase, not that we have to replace existing.
Right.
Right, and I think, if you'll recall from the discussion that we already had on fleet management, that while I agree with the hybrid, it would probably be premature to go for fully electric vehicles at this time.
And I'm not saying, I'm saying at some point, what's the life of these versus that? And then could they possibly be hybrids? That we could get a dual thing here on it.
Right. To be, just to be clear, though, as Supervisor Stoppa said, if we were to purchase vehicles today, we could continue to use them for their, whatever their use, their life is. It's just that new purchases, right, we'll have to switch over at some point.
And that concept is something that will be addressed in the fleet policy that comes back, so that we...
I just wanted to bring it...
It's a good question, because, I'm sorry.
And a lot of these line items, as we look at these vehicles, some of the department, they're doubling their gas. And that trend is not looking to go down. Gas prices are looking to get staying and going up. So I'm asking, because it's down the road in six months, are we going to continue to expect the department head to take away from other items within their department for fuel? Or are we being proactive to help them reduce that cost and use, you know, $100,000 to go do a project that they want to do, or buy software, or something like that? And so I just want to be conscientious that we have time to make those adjustments so they're not eating up their budget with fuel costs and coming to ask us to borrow money at the end of the year because the gas, to no reason of their own, that's what the economy looks like.
If your board would like to direct that, with the exception of the safety vehicles, only hybrid vehicles are procured, then you're welcome to do so.
Which complicates the issue, because, you know, cost now versus cost later on fuel. And then we have something coming before us in December to address this. But, you know, there's multiple factors, as Mr. Toffnelli, that's coming down. I mean, we're going to have greenhouse gas emissions reductions coming in front of us. This is one of the things that we can use as a benefit towards that, saying we're making steps as a county. Whether we agree with it or not, this is something that benefits it. So, I mean, all in all, yes, we can find benefit. It's whether we want to pay the extra for the hybrid as opposed to the gas down the road. Either way, we're paying, spending the money.
Either way, we're paying the money.
Yeah.
Once you purchase this, it...
It's here.
Yeah, and that's the cost, not going, like you pointed out, at the year-end. We don't have any money left in our budget at all, and we still have three months to go because we used it all in gas. Sorry, Susan. Because we've used it all in gas. And so it's a decision we need to look at, and I just wanted to bring it up.
But it should be common sense. We shouldn't have, I guess, point, when we're making the recommendation, what's in front of us, is everyone using the basic common sense and discretion? Because some of this stuff, it shouldn't have to be sitting at us, making that ultimate decision. When you, especially if we haven't done a fleet management program, which will be, anyways. If that's your recommendation, then I just don't want to be hearing about it again.
I don't understand what a fleet management program would have to do with how we buy vehicles. Because, I mean, to me, they're separate. Setting up a fleet management program, I mean, you know, Gary talked about the gas. But if we start, can all of these vehicles be hybrid? Will they serve the need of the department? If they're hybrid, can you get a all-wheel-drive hybrid vehicle? Well, I know you can. It's four-wheel-drive. I mean, going to electric vehicles, and we're going to have to pay to put in charging stations at off-site locations, which I think we should start doing anyway. I'm not sure why the decisions have to be the same. Having a fleet management system, which I think we've discussed before, and has to do with this. If a department, if the direction would be, can you buy, for HHSA, an SUV hybrid vehicle? That's what we would prefer you do, then we could get that direction.
Sure, if it's possible, yeah.
If it's something that fits their need, or a Ford F-150 truck, can it be purchased as a hybrid?
Yeah.
We would get that direction now. Considering, you know, what Gary said about the increased cost of gas, and we know that's going to occur. I think the sheriff's already addressed that issue.
Any other questions on the asset? Okay, we'll move on to admin.
So, Madam Chair, I guess I'm not clear. Are we supposed to say, yeah, we're okay with this, but give direction to if they could? Or are we just, what are we doing? I mean, I feel like we've just sort of...
Well, I'm not going to do it without a fleet management program. I mean, I'm not going to nitpick every department. I figured it would be common sense, so...
We could say that, I mean, some of these vehicles are already put out for, and people are on waiting lists. That there's a substantial weight there on certain vehicles. Some vehicles can't be rolled into that. But personally, I'm in favor of recommending that, in the cases where we can get a hybrid, such as this all-wheel-drive vehicle that I was just looking at for Health and Human Services, I think a hybrid would work. I mean, a hybrid uses both fuel and electricity. So they aren't going to get stranded out in the middle of nowhere if they run out of electricity. And at that point, you know, we may, we may see the benefit in the future. You know, I think we, as a board, could say right now, we would, you know, in the cases where we don't already have these out on waiting lists, can we please start moving towards looking at what the options are and possibly getting a hybrid if it's available?
I support that.
There's two staff members that have comments. Sorry, I didn't see you guys. Gabriel and Leslie. So I'll start with Gabriel, because you are on the screen right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just wanted to chime in on this issue about the greenhouse gas recommendations that the planning commission is currently dealing with. One of the policies on that list is for us to decarbonize the county's fleet of vehicles. And that begins with perhaps electrifying some of them, going hybrid over a period of time. But I think it would actually be a good, a good policy for the county to show leadership in this particular direction. Because ultimately, by the year 2030, we're supposed to have reduced, you know, the number of greenhouse gases within the county by a particular percentage. So the planning commission has spent about, this is about a third meeting now, kind of going through that list. So I have been speaking with some organizations and businesses that can actually provide us with electric charging stations, you know, either at an agreed-upon location or at the government facility. So we're not too far away from making this a reality. But my recommendation would be that if we're going to purchase any vehicles in the near future, this is year 2020 by year. So within the next 10 years, if we're going to make any purchases, we may start incrementally, starting with maybe hybrid vehicles. And then when we have an ample amount of charging stations, then we can begin to electrify our vehicle fleet. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment, and of course, there are all-wheel-drive hybrids that would work for our purposes. I happen to drive two. But they are more expensive, and so I would just advise the board that it's likely we'll come back with a technical adjustment at the final because of higher costs.
Thank you. Yes, we're aware. Either way, we're going to have to pay for it.
Can we poll the board?
Oh, yeah.
That's for you, Ms. Calloway. How do you, how do you feel about giving a recommendation when we can, if we can, for the time being?
I feel that if a department can get a hybrid, and it's not a year wait, then we would encourage them to do that.
Very good.
Jack?
More appropriate, yes, absolutely. I mean, as the assessor pointed out, sorry. As the assessor pointed out, there are vehicles available that can meet the needs, and it's great. I don't think it might be a great idea for a deputy to be driving one. But there's a lot of jobs that don't have to get up the hill at 80 miles an hour.
I agree.
Okay, Ben?
Of course I agree. I asked the assessor.
Looks like you got your call. Okay. Okay, is that clear with everyone? Cool. Okay, we'll move on to, we'll go on to the admin tab. So is there any board member that has questions for the admin tab? Jackie White's on.
Madam Chair, it's more of an ongoing statement, and you guys know me, I'll keep pounding on the drum until we get there. But certainly, I think we ought to consider Parks and Recreation as an economic development tool for our county. And I hope that we could have a further budget discussion on this at some point. I'll find, I'll show you where the money is later on in the budget.
Okay. Supervisor Stoppa?
You know, just to bring up, I, Ms. Van Motta did, did bring up that there is an adjustment on the transit occupancy taxes up from the $2.679 million here to about, what was it, $2.7 at this time that has been collected? From my understanding, from our meeting on Friday, these are made first numbers in here. At the, so until, until those are realized, that's what you're putting in the book. I mean, we could always look at averaging out those months and adding that in.
Yeah, and actually, they weren't, it was status quo off of the prior year. But they need to be adjusted, they need to be adjusted up. I apologize.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. I get it.
Is this a good time to, is this the appropriate time to do the TOT discussion? Or is that later on, what are you guys thinking?
Well...
I mean, it's kind of been the...
It's going to dictate the way to the, the tabs.
Your call, Madam Chair.
I'm open to that, because I think it'll hit on some of your request to have a discussion on parking lots and what Supervisor Stoppa just talked about. So...
Before we get into that lengthy conversation, can we do a couple of other quick items before we do that? Because I think that TOT is going to be, yeah, from admin.
We can take care of 90% of this, it's going to be straight.
Right.
Okay, what do you, what do you want to add?
I'm on page 137, which is Water Enhancement Program. And I see we have fire, a couple of fire chiefs in here right now. And this, this program started back in, I'm going to say 1999, Merida, when we started...
Late in the dollars days.
Yeah, when we started getting out of the fire business. And we created the existing fire districts that we have in the county. This was, account was to bring up, money was put in it to bring up all, buy new water tenders and give each district a water tender, and then bring up repair to the existing water tenders they had. And we got to that point in 2008, I think it was in 2009, where we accomplished what we did because we didn't have the money at the time to do all of them at once. But it took that number of years to get to that point. And in 2009 or '10, we had two water tenders. There was two water districts that were complaining that they had, their water tenders were never done right, or they had some issues with their water tenders. I think we ended up buying two new water tenders and repairing a couple of them. we ended up buying two new water tenders and repairing a couple of them. And, and at that time, it was my understanding, and the board said, okay, that's it, we're out of this business. We're, we're not, we, we brought everything up and did everything we were permitted to do. And apparently, we've continued to have this water enhancement fund, and it's being funded by apparently the building department. When you go and get a building permit, a certain amount is.
The 900?
Yeah, to go to this account. I, I, I don't, I think we got out of the water business, and I'm not trying to shut anything down here, but I'm just thinking that perhaps if the permit is pulled, and what district is pulled in, the money should be deposited in that district's account. And then we're out of this completely tracking this altogether, and each district is getting the amount that the permit is being pulled from, from their district, to maintain their water tenders and so forth. This, I was really surprised to see this again, and the, there's an amount that's been transferred into it. We're looking at about $273,399. That's a substantial amount of money for water tenders. I think the districts, either JPA, are looking to buy 10 new water tenders and replace all of their water tenders. That's a substantial amount of money. I, I think that's gonna be a cost of well over several million to do that. And at the, at the rate these funds are being put in here, that won't happen for a while. They can maybe buy one every three or four years, but I don't know what the exact cost is. 200, yeah, Mike, you can come up and talk. If it's $273,000 for a, a water tender, or is it more than that? I'm just trying to get us out of the water tender and the fire business, and get it where it belongs, with the fire districts.
Okay, yeah. Good morning, everybody. Water enhancement fee, I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with. It is collected through the building department for properties that are being developed that are beyond the regular hydrant systems and things like that. They pay a one-time fee of $900. I think the resolution was established back in 1993, and it's maintained a pretty flat nine hun, it maintained $900 from 1993 till present. I believe, on average, depending on how much growth there is in Calaveras County, that gets paid into the water enhancement fee is anywhere between 40 and up to $70,000 a year on the big years. Water tender cost is at a minimum of about $360,000 to purchase one. We have a total of, I believe, 10 water tenders all the way across, so if you did the quick math, that's roughly $3.6 million to replace all of them. Payments on 3.6 million, I believe, to replace them all on a 10-year loan, was roughly about $300-plus thousand dollars a year, which is significantly more than the 40 to 70,000 dollars that we have coming in. So we roughly have the $270,000 that's currently in the, in the water enhancement fee. Coppers right now would, I think, roughly make one-year payment, but not the years that would come after that. So the discussion's definitely been amongst the fire community, like, hey, how are we gonna replace this aging fleet? And we would definitely like to get creative with how we would make those payments to replace the fleet. Obviously, there's other ways to get creative with various types of loans or leases that we could go after, but we've had those discussions. Not too long ago, there was a NEXUS study to increase the water enhancement fee, and there really wasn't a, a real good structure, from what I understand, that came out of that NEXUS study that says, hey, this is reasonable, that would give us the kind of revenue to replace the water tenders. So recent discussions has been that we've come to the county, to the CAO, Joel Schwartz specifically, and said, hey, can we use the current coppers as it's designated within that resolution from way back in the early 90s, to go ahead and maintain the current fleet, with the hopes that one day we could replace them some way, somehow, and find some other revenue to do that? And I'm kinda looking at the CAO.
It's all in there. It's 100% of it is.
It's all in there, but the point I was trying to make is that we were gonna be out of the water business, and I thought we, we had a policy in place back in 2008, once we brought you guys all up, and everybody's water tenders was replaced anew. And that, that policy would still be going on, as, as far as the, the, the amount being deposited into your accounts through the building department. I thought it was going into each one of your account, like somebody in your district had to pay the 900 bucks. Apparently, that's not what's happening. And that was my point, that, that we're, we're still maintaining this account, that I thought should not, it should be going to each district, in your account separately, so we're out of the business.
Sorry for the long and short of it, but no, my understanding is what you believe to be the understanding of, that the money's being collected, but not into the districts. It is being collected and held at the county.
Yeah.
And we work with the CAO when it's time to spend that money, and I believe that's how it's done.
Fair.
Just briefly, I think Chief Johnson, that's a, that's a pretty accurate summary. This is a, it's a development fee or mitigation fee. Fire districts, for better or worse, under state law, cannot impose those themselves, so that's kind of why the county, why it comes through the county. Now, I think that's potentially a separate question, as to whether once we have collected it, you know, how that gets, and I'd be happy to, you know, look into that. But it does, it is something that has to come through the county to start, and.
There's a lot of things like that that we have to do.
Right.
But, but once we do that, it's under our guidance.
And we may, and, and Chief Johnson's absolutely correct. It has been, you know, there's some ta, there's been some talk of, you know, increasing it so as to increase those funds, but that would require a NEXUS study and all the things that go into increasing or implementing new development fees.
I have one quick question.
Yep.
With those being development fees, something that Supervisor Toffenelli brought up, them going to the areas where the house is being built, per se, or the develop, developed property's going. A lot of these development fees through state law, and some of the propositions have been put forward, you know, if you're paying a fee, it's supposed to enhance or support the area you're within. So that's a factor that I believe we should be taking into consideration on how these are delegated.
It may be.
Whether they, whether they work together with, through their JPA, to spread that out through the whole county and everything.
This one's a little different, because as was mentioned, you know, this is a fee that is, it's essentially an in-lie fee. If you yourself, when you're building your new, the new development, are not within, you know, X range of a fire hydrant, or you don't have your own pond or something that can be utilized, this is, you pay this in lieu of that, so that the districts could have water tenders that then.
Exactly.
What about, could it go toward, not to dismiss the water tender, but similar to what happened in Supervisor Graham Indy's district with the water storage? What are the, I guess, what are the rules around it outside of just the fleet? Can it be used to help the districts with water storage in those locations to refill?
I think not as currently set up, but potentially with, with changes. So that's something, I mean, that's something we can absolutely look at if the board's interested and bring it back. But I think it would require a change to the program as it's currently.
Could, you know, could, I, I don't know, just another word of, yes.
Thanks, once again. Yeah, just maybe to help, kinda confirm that, the $900 is a very nominal fee compared to the cost of building water storage on site, which I believe the NFPA and an engineered plan that's submitted through the building department can be achieved through, but it's, it's much more expensive. So they say, well, we'll be happy to pay a one-time fee, $900, that eventually gets out to another water source, which is the water tender program. For the fire department, bring a water tender to the, the area to suppress the fire. So a lot of times, when they're looking at the two options, the, the less expensive water enhancement fee of $900, which once again was established in 1993, I believe.
Yeah, it's 90, $19.90.
It, it is.
Yeah.
They're like, yeah, well, I'll pay the $19.90 amount for the fire department to come out with the water tenders. Problem is, as the water tenders wear out, and we're trying to fix them and keep them on the road, we're trying to still utilize those types of funds to keep, keep things rolling. So a, a financial struggle, but that's kind of how the system works.
Well, Jackie, you have a comment?
This is a, thank you very much. I, I wanna make sure, this 273 is for repairs and upgrades to the existing. We're not buying new fleet with this. Obviously, 273,000 doesn't get us that far. So this is for ongoing maintenance of the district.
Yeah, for, for 10, 10, 10 apparatus.
Thank you. My question is, and this is for building official, do we apply this $900 in-lie fee to all new homes in Calaveras, or just those not connected to public water or close to fire hydrants?
Exactly. Good morning, we're Doug Alom, Chief Building Official. To answer that question, any occupant structure, whether it's residential or commercial, we're measuring the distance from that building to the nearest hydrant. If, if you're over 1,000 feet from that hydrant system, then we charge that in-lie fee. For commercial, more often, what they are required by fire code anyway to have onsite storage, however, they can reduce that storage by a set amount of gallons by paying the in-lie fee. Most of them will take advantage of that, because the, the fee doesn't offset enough of the gallons to make it financially feasible. But in general, it's, it's applied to the residential, any, any new dwelling in the county.
So if you're, say, living in Mount Ranch, and you don't have essential water, you'd be paying this fee. But if you lived in, say, La Contenta, you would not be paying this fee?
In general, yes. However, there is the option for a, a landowner to opt to put in your own water storage complying with NFPA 13, or NFPA 1142 for rural firefighting. And if you can show that you've met that amount of gallons, then you're not required to pay that in-lie fee.
Right. But in general, in a development, they would have water, or existing, so.
In, in general, yes.
So, you know, obviously, that being the case, of course, Gary's point about the money staying in the district as developed, would be, would be interesting to see how that comes up. However, I would wanna see that come from the JPA, if there was any change to that. 'Cause they've been working really well as a team, and I don't think splitting them up would be, I would like that to come from them, not from us.
Sure.
It benefits you more, Mr. Garrett.
I know. No, and, and I just, I just thought I'd open this conversation, and of course, we'd like to hear from the JPA, and I'd like to hear from Sarah on how this can be done, and whether it can be split up into districts or what. I, I'm just going back from when we got into this business, and what we were trying to do and get accomplished was out of it entirely. And, and, you know, there's nothing saying that they can't have the money put in their own account. If the JPA wants their own account as a JPA, and put into their own account separately, I'm just saying that, you know, this is in here within our budget, and we're handling this money, and I thought we were out of this, as we upgraded all their tenders and bought new tenders, and Mike was around at the time, all that was going on, so.
So if I understand Supervisor Toffenelli, the question is whether the county could continue to collect the fee, but then rather than hanging on to it, to just right away kind of send it to the district?
Send it to the districts, or if the JPA says, sign up, or set up their own account, where they have accountability, they don't have to go to the CAO, they can make their decision on it and, on their own, and it's their money, it's put in there, it's away, it's not within the county.
I'd be, yeah, I'd be happy to look into the legal feasibility of that, and what board action, if it is feasible, what board action might be required to get, get us there.
And that, that might even be simpler for you guys. You won't have to come, and if you guys decide the JPA is in your own account, JPA's account, or what have you, then you guys, however you decide to spend it.
Yeah, we could definitely bring that to the JPA and, and the board, just to say thank you very much. We, we desire to just be a one unified fire group for, for county, and, and so that's our desire, and of course, we'll bring it back. And we've been working essentially in that same way, Supervisor Toffenelli, because we've collectively said, hey, what do we wanna ask? But we've asked to the CAO, of course, as you know, because that's who's holds the, the funding, and then that's been the mechanism, with the exception of, rather than just collect the money ourselves, so we can.
Thanks, Mike.
And I would like to note that the projected revenue for this year has also been included in the recommended distribution to the fire. So that would be 100% of what was in that account this year.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli? No? Okay. Any other questions or comment? Nope, online? Okay. So we'll move on. So Jack had a question. Do we wanna dive in, or do we wanna go and hit the ones that we can get through?
It seemed like we could knock out some of this low-hanging fruit.
Good. Let's do that.
Let me get down to the, let me down to, what do you think, Garrett?
Wanna do this?
Fine, I, I don't have a problem.
Okay. So we're going back to that. Okay. So we're going back to tab. Airport, are there any questions on the airport? I'm not seeing anything from the board. Is there any public comment on the airport?
There is no online public comment?
Okay. They're satisfied with the recommendation. Who's the other low-hanging? County Council? Is there any questions on county councils' recommendation?
I've got Assessor next.
Assessor's at her airport.
I thought we were just getting a low-hanging department. Do you want me to?
I'm the low-hanging.
The low-hanging, that's, that's.
duly noted.
That's that trophy you got?
I don't know, maybe we stay in order.
Okay.
I know, I, I might.
Sarah? I think it will be easier for us.
Well, it seems to be.
I think, I think I made a bad suggestion. Withdraw that suggestion.
Okay.
Way to backtrack.
So we're backtracking. Okay, Assessor's office. Okay, any board members that have any questions about the Assessor's office? Supervisor Stoppin?
I was gonna let Mr. Garrett go first.
But you're lights on, who didn't?
My light's off now. Mr. Garrett?
I, I don't have any questions on it right now.
Mike, Mike?
I have, I have several concerns.
Your light went back off.
It happens, it's a brief burn. I have several concerns. I, I discussed them with the CAO. They're primarily around, you know, we have a transition in offices happening between office holders. I just wanna make sure we're consulting with incoming Assessor, which will, won't be till the end of the year, but, you know, this is a long-term thing, so I just wanted to make sure that we're making sure everything's coordinated, and the CAO assured me that we were.
Supervisor Stoppin?
My, my, mine goes more towards what Ms. Callaway already brought up earlier, earlier in this book. It brings up that the projected revenue for this last year is substantially lower than, or not substantially is a little bit of a strong word, but is lower than last year. And, and the reality of our situation, that we haven't been in decline in value, although we do understand that some properties are still, regardless of situation, in decline in value, more than not, things are sold for quite a bit more. And I think that number is, while we do support being conservative, we can't justify being conservative in that scenario, and that, 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 that form of revenue is gonna come in much, not significantly, but much higher than what it actually is. So, but they'll come out in the wash and from the actuals. And that's important to keep in mind, though, at this time, where we're looking at our totals.
Any other supervisors? Mine's more of a comment. I'm just getting concerned that we are not making the purchase on the megabyte, and we keep carrying it over year to year. So I guess, it is a need, and I, but if we're gonna continue to carry it over and over, should we be just waiting for the time they actually want to make that purchase and allocate that fund otherwise? I, yeah, I. I mean, if it.
I'm sorry, what line are you on?
I'm on page 155, and the item is 4721, transfer from designated fund. And item is 4721, transfer from designated fund.
We've, we've had, we've had this, isn't, isn't part of this from a grant that's been there for some years? Where are we at with that? I guess that's a question for Ms. Davis.
Yeah, Leslie.
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether she's available, but, yeah. So, but I do understand that this property tax system is still something that they want to purchase and get, and get implemented. So I have had a conversation with somebody in the assessor's office regarding that specific thing, but I defer to Leslie in terms of an update on where she's at with her grant.
Okay, any other question? She's not online. She's not available.
We can ask, ask her to follow back up.
So with that, any other questions, comments? Any public comment, questions? Is she back?
No. There is no online public comment.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, auditor controller.
Ms. Gomes, how is her being the beans?
Are there any questions from the board on this? If copy had anything you want to say about?
Yeah, no, my specific question is, are there any concerns or anything you would like to let us know about moving forward?
Big smile.
I actually don't have any concerns. I am, my, my one concern, I guess, would be we don't know what the economy is going to do. There are a whole bunch of roadblocks in getting assets, so that's why you see a lot of roll forward and purchases from the prior year. We just can't predict those things. So with administration, we were conservative in some of those revenue streams.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have questions, but I'd like to find another space for you. They're in a basement, there are no windows.
We have little port holes.
You have the little. I know. I just, I mean, none of your office ever complains, but it's, it would be nice for you to have a space where you could see outside or walk outside like Public Works does at least.
I hear you're building a building for the district attorney? No.
They are defensible.
So maybe we could move you if I can get more money for animal services, we could move you over there.
My office does have a request for a remodel and I would really love to see that get approved. That would actually allow us to work in one area instead of splitting stuff, so. But we like the port holes, we do.
Jack?
Thank you. Kathy, this isn't really for you. Your shot seems okay, but it's under your tab, so I gotta take it on. First one is, you know, we're going to have to talk about the CVB and that's under this tab also, county contributions. I'm on page 164 and that's going to bring us to the TOT conversation again. But before we get to that, I do have a question that I put out to CAO and I'm pretty sure she has an answer for me. Tell me about the Central CER Planning Council agreement that has us paying $231,000 to Calpers.
Do you want me to discuss that, Krista?
Yeah.
There, there was a joint agency years ago with several counties involved and there were, there were employees there who successfully found, filed a suit, I suppose, and found that they're entitled to Calpers retirement. And that particular line item is the county's required payment to Calpers to make that, those employers whole.
So is this an, is this an ongoing thing or is this?
It actually is not an ongoing thing. The Auditor Controller Reverend Tuolumne is the lead person for all of the different entities who have to pay into it. And she is attempting to get Calpers to agree to allow installment payments and Calpers has been delayed in getting back to her. And so that's why it's been budgeted for, that's our full liability. We just don't know when we have to pay it or how, whether it's installments or the full amount.
So the full liability that we're, our liability is 231,000.
Correct.
As part of, what was the name of the organization that stuck us with this bill?
Central CER Planning Council. It was the JPA.
It was the JPA.
Of which we were part of.
Yep.
And thanks to Randy Handwell, Tuolumne, I don't usually give Randy compliments, but he's brought it up along with their treasurer and our auditor.
Right.
And we disbanded the JPA, we disbanded the agency.
But we have to pay into. It's essentially back Calpers.
The unfunded liability for the most.
Okay, so we have found that in suits, that is what it is. So I guess the only other question is the CVB, which is, I guess this is all TOT under county contribution, so whenever you guys want to take that one off.
So please back me to the author of Jack, because I know I contacted you about the same item. What do, what would prevent us from just paying it out and just moving on? Because some of the JPA members have done that and they're not having to allocate.
We can probably do that. I am waiting to hear from Ms. Bautista over in Tuolumne County, unfortunately or fortunately. She's also the registrar of voters, so she's kind of busy.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly, I can look into whether we can just get that taken care of. I would love it. I'm sure you, as a board, would also love it. I just don't know if Calpers is okay to take our payment at this point in time. I don't think that they would be hesitant to take money. I just am not sure what the arrangement is.
Okay. Because at my understanding, where some of the JPA members had already paid theirs off.
It's possible, that would be news to me. I mean, I think as, as the auditor said, part of the issue is each county, each member county has its own piece, right? And so I think it's just whether Calpers expects it all to come together or whether they can kind of piecemeal it.
All right, so unless the JPA members just cut the check directly to Tuolumne, my, some of the JPA members have already.
That's certainly possible.
Paid theirs out.
Yeah, I'll, I think I let you know that I did contact Debbie and she just hasn't gotten back to me. So as soon as I do here, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board on this?
I think I can roll part of my question on the TOT into the different departments that are separate from this. I'm just, you know, mine will be just more curious when it comes to public works. I kind of was able to get into it with the sheriff on budget, the TOT revenue portion, but, or expenditure portion. But, you know, I understand that has to be one contribution and everything, but I can get it into that when I get into the public works budget, so. And I, I have some of the same questions. I believe that Mr. Garamendi, when it comes to the, the visitors bureau and the other tran, transit and city taxes.
Okay, so with your permission, ma'am chair, then I'll just bring it. We've got a, you know, we've got a TOT with an agreement that, and since this is in here, we got a TOT to allocate 25% in our four different ways that we've all agreed to. If we hit our goal, our numbers, which as the, as the CAO put forward at a year end, since we're talking about true-ups with the, with fire, that's what we go by, that's going to be $750,000 to the, to the visitors bureau. Now, I see the director's here and he and I have spoken about this before and I've said this at least for the last three budgets. I would, I think that we're a little over our skis with just flat out giving the CVB a blank check for $750,000. I know that the executive director is willing to present a budget to this board and we can take a look at the budget. But I think the blank check and then coming back to us, I think $750,000 is a whole lot of money. It's $300,000 and even budgeted in this. So I want to talk about the CVB budget and whether we're just going to let it be a blank check or whether we're going to actually have a budget. Anybody want to talk about that? I guess I'm pulling the board.
Do you want to?
Yes.
I'm not clear. Are you saying? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can have a discussion on it, but I'm not clear on what you're proposing to do. I think the CVB is a very well-run organization and it does a lot for this county in, in bringing in tax dollars, it's general fund dollars that we use and for the merchants of our county. We are way up there in a national registry as a place to visit and to live and I think a lot of that has to do with the CVB and they're reaching out not only to the other counties in California, but nationwide. And that's not cheap and I think for the money we're putting into it and what we're getting back, it is, is profitable and very good for us as far as our general fund. You saw the sales tax dollars amount, a lot's got to be attributed to CVB.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I believe that they are very valuable and they're doing a good job. My question is, if the CVB could run last year on $350,000 or whatever the budget was and we could ask this, we could ask that $400,000, do we need to be spending another $350,000 that's not, they don't need, is not in the budget or can we use that on other priorities? I mean, that's just the question. I mean, do we want to go buy the money they need or we want to give them more than they need and not fund other things? So maybe the question is, what does the CVB need?
I, I, I'll just say this, we're not, the fire departments don't use the 750 and, I mean, and the sheriff's department and Public Works. Why are we picking on CVB? If they get this increase, I'm sure they'll find a way to, to productively use the money and, and just not squander it away. I think they're well-run, a good organization, set up by our merchants and most everybody that's on that board is a merchant within Calaveras County and they're, they know how to handle money or they wouldn't be in business, self-employed business the way they are, so.
If I might, then if we have the director of the CVB here, maybe we ought to ask him what their budget is and what do they need for the year? And if it's less than 750, that money can go back into the general fund, fund things like libraries and.
I have further questions too, but Marita, let's start with Marita.
I don't know if you need to be standing up there.
Thank you. I mean, the other way we can look at it is if the sales tax increases for the fire districts, why give the fire districts TOT money? The sheriff has a huge part of the county general fund revenue. Is he going to miss $400,000? You know, the roads, not, roads can have it. Not, not, I don't think any of us will disagree on that. If Supervisor, you're asking, we should review the CVB budget to see how they're spending or budget their revenue or what they're going to do, then the same could be said for let's review the fire district's budgets to see how they're spending their money. And I don't think we should be doing that. I understand what you've been saying, but I also agree with Gary. They are the ones that have brought business to the county. And when I hear and see what they did during COVID and the ads that they did were saying, you know, we'd really like you to be here, now's not the time or something like that, you know, we'd really welcome you when things open up. I thought that was, they kept Calaveras's name out there, but it wasn't saying, oh, we want you up here, even though people came anyway. I don't see why we should be micromanaging their budget or the fire districts.
Ben?
They're in the room.
Ben?
I think there are multiple factors. You know, just because fire has, has a TOT going and we're talking apples and oranges here, you know? When we, when we give them those, when we give the, this, the, so I'm not even going to discuss the fire departments right now, when, you know, that can be the, the next conversation if you bring it up, Ms. Callaway. But with the Valley Spring, or Valley Springs, with the visitors bureau. Now, I have, I have some concerns, you know, there, there, you know, when we give them that money, it's to sell Calaveras County. Now, yes, COVID was a changing time, but we don't give them the money to tell people to stay away. That's not what we gave them the money for, that wasn't the intention. So, you know, may, if you liked the message, that's fine, but that wasn't the intent of the money. We can talk about also, I'm curious what the, what the Angels camp portion of it is on that total. I'm curious as to, this came up last year during budget, you know, that, you know, what are those monies being spent on? You know, it, was it all for putting out the message for people to, you know, we'd love to have you to stay home or was it, or was it spent elsewhere? It, within a community that's not directed towards bringing people into Calaveras County? You know, those are, those are real questions that were brought up prior that I would like to hear answers to.
So you want to review their budget?
We, we asked for it last year. We were told it was going to be brought to us.
I thought.
And now's budget time, so I would love to hear it.
There's a person in this audience who knows the numbers.
And my intent is not to cut, I, I, I see the value in it, but I think hearing from him would benefit us in saying, what does it take to run the visitors bureau? Was it, what does it take to run the visitors bureau? To, you know, to be successful?
Well, I think a lot of the items, when we're asking that question, it can't be quantified either. No, no. So, but there's a couple of questions, so we need clarity on what the, Martin, would you come up and answer what your total budget is? And then if you are able to, what the portion of the City of Angels?
Sure. Thank you. We have done our budget for fiscal year 22, 23, which will get approved by our board on Thursday. We have put in $400,000 from the county and 110 from the city. And that is a conservative figure. I don't need more than 400 to run the visitors bureau this next year. Supervisor Stopper, Supervisor Garamendi had asked to see the budget. I didn't know that you wanted to as well. I did meet with Supervisor Garamendi and went over the budget. I did meet with Krista, our CAO, and go over the budget as well. So they're very aware and if you'd like to sit down, I can go through the budget with you.
I think another thing.
That's a fair, that's a fair answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because he just told us, out of that $735,000, that he's budgeted in $400,000.
400, can I just say, $400,000 is what I think we should be spending. I think that, that we are seeing a, a bit of a heyday with the pandemic, with the people that are coming back up. I think our TOT is probably larger than it has been in quite a long time, but I don't think that that's going to sustain and I think we will see a drop here in the next year or two.
And I also wanted to bring up, you know, some of the, the dollar amounts that do go to CVB are what our expectation, are the government, governing bodies in each of the jurisdictions. So one item that came up a couple of years ago, which increased the CVB allocations, were refunding signs of the entrance into the county, which then was put on hold because of COVID, because we didn't know what the economy. of COVID, because we didn't know what the economy was going to look like, and so it was a free. So when we, just be mindful, when we are allocating these funds specifically to CVB, it is project that we too are asking the CVB to do, benefit not only what they're doing outside of the county, but within the county to bring and welcome folks in. So just take that into a food for thought going into the future, is they can and do a lot of work that benefits right here for all of us.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a poll that we allocate $400,000 as requested by the Visitors Bureau to their budget and reduce accordingly, taking the remainder and putting it into the general fund. If that's their budget and that's what they're requesting, we're going to drop a quarter of a million dollars that they're not asking for on them. So there's my poll.
So, Martin, is that accurate?
It's acceptable. It's acceptable. I mean, I would like the opportunity next year to revisit that if, in fact, you know, we do see our TOT, you know, falling off and we need to be marketing more, but I think that this is realistic for this year.
Okay.
That's more than fair. I appreciate, I appreciate that answer, Martin. It's great, actually.
And possibly into the future, if this type of discussion happens prior to getting to this day, to alert the board on, Marita?
I don't support that. If we're going to start going down that road and micromanaging them every year, then we ought to be doing that for fire departments, we ought to be doing that for the sheriff's office. Sheriff said, well, I'm not going to spend all the TOT or however he does it, then, okay, could you give us back some? If we want to say, let's divvy up the TOT into five increments, the fifth being the general fund, I'll support that. But to pick on just the CVB without doing it to the sheriff and the fire districts, I don't think that's appropriate, and that's going to start making more work. Either we've made this commitment and we stick to it, and this is going to be possibly a good year. I know there've been bad years, and our businesses have suffered, and we've really said to the CVB, well, what are you doing to bring people in? I mean, it's going to cycle at one day. I don't want us to do that unless we do it for the others also.
I do not disagree with that statement. There should be a methodology across the board, but with Martin standing in front of us, saying that I'm open to going with that recommendation at this time, but knowing that next year will be a different conversation and a different methodology across the board for all of that 25% and/or the needs, given that if there's economic, large economic changes.
Well, then, let's ask the sheriff. What are you going to do with yours?
I think you're missing, my point is that the agency is sitting in front of us, asking $400,000, and you're offering to give them 750, and I'm saying we could use that $350,000 for something else.
I hear that, Jack, but I'm also saying, you have the head of the department there, what, of the organization there, I mean, he's putting his budget together based on whatever historically has happened, and let's ask the fire department, it's the same thing. He just happens to be here, and so, okay, let's, and he's an easy target, not, the CVB is an easy target, let's pull it. Well, with the sheriff's budget and the millions of dollars, he's an easy target, too.
Okay, we'll just disagree.
Okay, are there any other before, are there any other specific questions for Martin? Otherwise, I'm going to let him sit down. Oh, sorry, Gay. Sorry, Gay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been sitting here patiently during the conversation.
My head's been this way.
My question, and thank you, Martin, for coming here, and thank you for making your statement of the amount that you guys have in your budget. My question to you is, if with Marita, that you went back to your board and said, well, we've been given an extra $350,000 above what we've already voted on our budget, what would you recommend to them to do with that money? Is there, is there anything specific?
To be honest with you, at this moment, I wouldn't know how to spend that kind of money on what we're doing. I think what we, our game plan and what we've been doing to date pencils out at 400, and I'm very happy with that. I wouldn't know what to do.
I can't argue with you then on that, and I appreciate you being very frank of word with us about that. I'm not going to, the fire department and the sheriff and Public Works, I'm not going to ask them to come up and present what they're going to do with the money if we give them $750,000. I think they all have a larger budget and they have the ability to utilize that money as a whole. So I'm going to go with what the director of CVB is asking for, and I'll be very happy to give you the $400,000 to track.
Ben?
Thank you. You know, that was a frank answer, and actually, I think it was a good business answer, and I really appreciate that. So I can, I can support, I can support giving you the 400,000. I can support taking another look at it next year, depending on the conditions. Maybe it will, maybe, you know, things will go down, and we will want to do that money. But I think there's also other valuable things that can help you, that we can put that, we need to consider for that $350,000 we set aside, that could possibly be towards economic development, or, you know, that coincide with the Visitors Bureau. I mean, we have to consider that with our partnerships also going forward.
I would like talking to the board going forward regarding tourist infrastructure, wayfair and sign, public restrooms, all these other things that we deal with, so, yes.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of good things we can do. That money, that would actually be beneficial in every which way, so, thank you.
Jack?
Tourism is our number one industry, and I think having a robust discussion about how it's an important piece of economic development and what the needs are, would be a great opportunity for a study session in the future.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay. We, Marita?
No? Okay. Cover my bases, since I seem to have missed somebody, and it's not purposely.
You missed yourself. What do you have to say?
I agree with what everyone said. I just don't want it to be a trend that goes in next year, just making sure the line of communication is open between administration and the CVB of what expectations are, not only in county, but also outside, to continue to support the merchants and getting tourists here. So, thank you, Martin.
Okay.
Okay.
So we got that.
Madam Chair, if I may, so we'll include those changes in the adopted budget that we bring back in September.
Yes, please.
In the adopted thing, in the month of guessing?
No, in September. We didn't actually budget that increase yet. Right now, the allocations are based on the status quo, so when we increase that, then we will budget this in September. We will not release any funding that isn't.
No, you're talking, but the CVB budget being this, 400, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
In the final budget.
Yes.
Right, but, yeah, we do, right. We'll make adjustments for in the month.
Well, I think there's another robust conversation of the TOT. It's more than just allocating to the, what are revenue, our reserves, what are the expectation projects? We've mentioned parks and recs. You got capital improvement projects, so as we get through this, I think some of that extra that we got from CVB or that CVB doesn't need is going to start weaving into the conversation of the rest of this budget. But, okay, Marita?
Well, if we give them what's, we've given them a fourth, I understand what Jack said and what Martin said, I want 400. He's being conservative as we are for the budget. He's getting, what we'd be getting would be 435, like everybody else. Not the 700, because we don't know about that until later, but to me.
Those numbers will be in the adopted budget.
We're now netting $35,000 under the general fund. Why not just give them the 40, the 435, like everybody else, and then revisit that at final budget?
Madam Chair, I believe we just polled and decided to stick with the 400.
Yes.
So I'd say we move on.
Moving on. So that was under the tab. Oh, Gay?
I was just going to say, is it possible, all these things we're talking about as we go along, in the last several years, we've had up on the, on the screen projected, and we write down things that we've decided on, so we can, at the end, we can see everything as a whole, and if that's possible?
Yeah, admin staff is tracking this.
We just decide 400,000 for a TOT for the Visitors Bureau, and as we go through this, we can add it, and then everybody can see what's going on.
Yeah, we can bring that back. After.
Want to wait for that to come up, or?
No, we can move on, get that ready to go.
Okay, are there any comment about the CVB discussion specifically? Not the TOT as a whole, just CVB?
There's no online comment.
Okay. So, moving on, are there any other, are there any other questions in the auditor, under the auditor control row tab? Okay. So, I know fire is anxiously wanting to comment, so I will allow you to come up and comment, but I want to ask the board, do we, are we going to continue the TOT conversation or keep going through the tabs? Do we want to keep, break into the other two items in the TOT?
I have no, I have, I have no, I mean, are you asking, do we want to change the proportional?
No, I think if it said, did there any comment on the breakout for?
Mike's going to ask for the 350 that we didn't give.
Okay, come on, Martin.
No, I certainly, I'm in attendance with Chief Robert today. We're always very interested in the TOT and Prop 172 for fire, and the discussion that I just witnessed has nothing to do with why I walked up, but if I don't get up here, then my cohorts that are not here that are watching, they will, well, you don't want to know what's going to happen. So, just regarding fire, we've had some discussions with the CAO and been working with Joel Schwartz. Unfortunately, he can't be here again today, and, you know, just to memorialize the methodology that we believe, what we would prefer, is the exact way that, of the 25%, and we had some discussion, like, how does that 25% come about? And I believe we all feel, at the fire community coming to you as to ask, that, you know, we do utilize that look-back method, right? So, everything I've seen here today so far shows that with all the accumulated TOT, I can't recall every single number, but if we use the first 10 months of the 12 months of the fiscal year that's about to wrap up, where roughly everybody would be entitled to 435,000, but we have two big months that we're due to collect, so come September, the look-back method of what this fiscal year that's wrapping up of '21-'22, the actuarial of the actual amount that's collected, is going to be a full 25% of that number that'll be approved in September for the fire community, and I think that's about my whole question or statement.
Unless I, unless I receive or direction to the contrary, that's my intention.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on the auditor? I got to open. Moving on to building. Yes, building. Are there any questions? No. We're going to, so we're getting, I just realized, we're getting up on lunch, want to do, what time do you guys have to go?
Half hour.
I know it's a half hour we have to give you. Want to finish building and then?
Yeah, we finished building and then?
Let's finish building and, and then we'll take a lunch break. So are there any board members that have a question on the building?
Mr. Oliver? Good to see you. Most of us here, is the decrease in revenue? The, you know, I'm trying to, I started the budget like eight days ago, and so I'm trying to remember everything from each one of these I read. But, you know, I think you addressed it here, and I appreciate it, but, you know, the concern here is major changes in expenditures. Code compliance expenditures are expected to decrease as self-abatement is on the rise due to the ability of the department to collect fines in a streamlined method. What's that mean? I know we had some.
Good question, yeah. So, in essence, when we adopted the fee structure, when I brought that to your board, I identified that there was going to be costs for the service of maintaining a case, and it was agreed that we'd only charge that if we reached a level of citation. And the discussion was that potentially we were not going to see a lot of revenue come back on that, because when someone who is given a notice that says, hey, you know, here's your issue, if you comply, you don't have to pay the fee, most people will comply. Well, it was far better of a result than we anticipated, so we have a lot of self-abatement when they see the notice initially, and it doesn't rise to the level of citation. In addition to that, though, what's not addressed here is that we have seen a reduction this year in the amount of code-compliant cases, which kind of goes hand in hand with the small permit issuance is down as well. Linking those two together isn't intuitive, but when you look at a market where price of lumber, price of materials, price of gas, everything is going up, the homeowner is generally going to avoid the permit or avoid the project, and then also avoid, you know, code compliance in the process. So, everything kind of reacts the same in the market when it fluctuates on both sides of that, so we see a reduction in revenue on both sides.
And so I see the adjustment. So what you're saying is, not quite as much work, not as much revenue coming in with code compliance because people are self-abating, which is a great thing. I mean, wow, people are doing the right thing. That's phenomenal. And you're making up for it with deleting one of the vacant code enforcement officer positions to balance that budget out.
In essence, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, they're pretty straightforward, Billy Department, just want to hear your voice.
Why, thank you.
Are there any other questions on the board? Marita?
How come there's no money in there for code enforcement? What am I missing?
Because they were involved into building.
Combined efforts.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Another savings.
Jack?
Doug, thank you. This is a very responsible budget. When you, we're going to keep these positions in, I hate this term, but the parking lot, so when things ramp back up, you can move into next year, assuming the economy and building picks up, you'll still have these positions that we can fill? I assume that's your intent.
Correct, the positions.
We're not eliminating them.
Yeah, we can't fill them yet, but there's an anticipation as the economy recovers that we will need those positions.
Thank you.
Gay?
Yeah, I'm curious, the other three I could understand. The fire prevention inspector, we have currently an open, we don't have one for the county? Or is this an additional one to the one we already have?
We don't have a position of fire prevention inspection hired yet. What we have is a supervising building inspector who is required to be certified as a fire inspector. He's, his position was to manage both the future fire prevention in addition to the building inspection team, so he's required to know and do both. He's He's been carrying that workload, and since we haven't been fortunate enough to be able to move forward on the fire prevention through, you know, Monty there, for lack of a better term, the workload is enough that he can balance that between that and his other duties. So as we move forward with the, the fire prevention program with the J P A, we'll, we'll see a need for that position, but currently we don't.
Would this, this position, I, I, I know Calco has, has one, I don't know what's transpiring with it at the moment, but normally annually, you do a fire inspection in commercial buildings to make sure everything is up to date and the public going in is safe. Currently, we don't, unless the fire district themselves perform that with their own fire inspector, that's not actually being done because of the position being open at this time? And the fire district's not having each one of them.
I'll say, there are a series of required inspections that are annual for several commercials type buildings. Those are currently the responsibility of the individual districts. I can't respond as to whether they're doing that, but the, the goal of the fire prevention was to give each district the opportunity to have those services provided for them if they don't have the staff to do it. So we, we're not there yet.
So that's where we're headed. Okay, thank you.
Marita, do you have any question? Okay. Any other questions? Do you have any, is any public comment, questions?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Are you good? Okay, so if you're done, okay. With that, we will take lunch, um, an hour, an hour and a half.
Maybe an hour.
An hour? We will take an hour.
Mike?
We will take an hour lunch, so we will be back in the boardroom at one ten, one fifteen, one fifteen, back in the boardroom.